Good evening and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of Wednesday, March 8, 2023. At this time, I call upon everyone in the audience and our members to stand up and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that you all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers past and present. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to announce that our next regular scheduled meeting for the Board of Appeals is Wednesday, March 22, 2023. Moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting. The first matter is special permit ZSP-23-1. It's South Coast and Associates, Inc., South Coast Investments, 111 Prospect Street, MAP 123 Lot 80. It's a general residence district, January 19, 2023, and January 26 of 2023 illegally advertises matter. I'm not going to read the rest of this, gentlemen. At this point in time, we needed and we requested that the matter be continued. We were going to have issues with a quorum for today, so as a result, we asked and we informed the petitioner in this case that we be continuing the case to our next date, which is Wednesday, March 22. Is that what I indicated earlier? Our next date? Yeah, March 22. So it's Wednesday, March 22 is the next date. All right, gentlemen? Next matter on is a variance case, ZAV-22-9. It's also a special permit, ZSP-22-13. These were cases that were previously heard. We had an open meeting on this probably about a month ago. The matter was continued, but I'm going to read it into the record that the petitioner in this case has paused in play. The subject property is 562 Reed Road, MAP 163 Lot 19. The property is located in the General Business Aquifer Protection District, Zone 3. It was advertised on June 19, 2023, and January, excuse me, January 19, 2023, and January 26, 2023. There was a denial letter, which I've already previously read into the record. In addition, the petitioner is seeking a variance for setback relief to construct an approximately 45-foot-by-80-foot, which measures 4,213 square feet, dog daycare building, and they're seeking relief on the Article 33, Section 35-33.2b minimum setback requirements and Article 43, Section 375-43.2 variances. Also, we had heard special permit, ZSP-22-13. The petitioner slash applicant paused in play, and it's the same property, advertised the same time. Here, they're seeking a special permit for lot coverage relief to construct an approximately 45-by-80-foot, and they're seeking relief from the Article 28, Section 375-28.5b prohibited uses, and it's the aquifer protection area. It's the lot coverage requirement in excess of 10%. So, gentlemen, if you recall, we had opened both of these matters. We had a public hearing on this. However, I think that we collectively agreed that given there was a concern by the DPW relative to the calculations and the determination of the impervious area, that we felt best to continue both matters and not grant one without the other, grant both to get further comment from the DPW. So I'm going to read the comment that was provided, and I believe it was received by this board on February 22, and it came from Tim Barber at the DPW. And it indicates, "After discussing with Rich Reom, who's the engineer for the petitioner, the revised existing conditions plan shows landscaped areas where edge-of-gravel area was labeled. We agree with existing impervious calculation of 24,271 square feet, which is 55.5%. We have also calculated the proposed impervious cover to be 24,271 square feet, which translates to 55.5% prior to any roof runoff infiltration. Lot coverage is defined as all uses on a lot that include, but are not limited to, buildings, structures, driveways, parking areas, gravel areas, walks, patios, storage areas, impervious surfaces. Building footprints up to 10% of the lot area with artificial infiltration are allowed to be subtracted from the total impervious. With the lot area being 43,708 square feet, 10% is calculated as 4,371, subtracted from 24,271 equals 19,900 square feet, which translates to 45.5%. Therefore, the development appears to propose a 4,371-square-foot, 10% reduction of the impervious cover from 55 to 45%. The current variance request of 75.16, 17.2%, subtracts an additional 4,171 square feet, 9.5% roof area beyond the allowable 10%, and an additional 7,205 square feet, 16.5% of paved driveway and gravel areas, which is not allowed by the Aquifer Protection Bylaw. While additional infiltration is encouraged, it cannot be subtracted from the total impervious cover above the 10%. Therefore, the request for 17.2% impervious lot cover cannot be achieved with this proposed land development. The addition of a large number of animals on the site could increase nitrogen loading into the aquifer. Special provision should be made for the treatment and removal of animal waste. The bylaw prohibits the storage of animal manures unless such storage is within a structure designed to prevent the generation and escape of contaminated runoff or leachate." And that's what we received. I'll be honest with you, gentlemen, I was a little concerned because I'm not quite exactly certain how some of this translates into what we need to make determinations of. I placed a call to Mr. Barber, unfortunately, I think he might have been busy today because I didn't receive a response. But I'm going to call upon the petitioner's engineer, Mr. Reom. He might be able to shed some light on this, and if I feel more comfortable, maybe a determination, we can move forward with it. Otherwise, I'm not sure. All right. So, Mr. Reom.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Rich Reom, Chief Engineer at Prime Engineering, and we prepared these plans and reports. When you continue the meeting, DPW wasn't convinced that our computations were right, primarily because there were some planting beds, landscaped areas, that had stone mulch, and they had interpreted it as being impervious area. And once we explained to them that that was stone mulch, they agreed that that shouldn't be counted as impervious. There's also a patio that has cracks between it, so the water can percolate to the ground, so they agree that that shouldn't be calculated due to the bylaw being specific about not counting that as impervious. What they're stating here is correct, that we're allowed by the bylaw as a matter of right 10% of the lot area to infiltrate the roof area. And what we presented to you was that we've got more roof area, so it behooves us, since we're up at the 55.5% impervious, to infiltrate more of that roof area. It's clean rainwater, and we're putting it into the ground, and that's really the basis of our petition to you, to allow some extra infiltration into the ground of clean water. We've also added a smaller area of paved area that we put through a stormwater treatment system before it's allowed to infiltrate into the ground.
Where is that on this plan?
In this, in this bowl here, you can see the circle. It's picking up the drainage and then putting it into the filtration system. And it says contact treatment model CS 2015-4-C. So, we're putting clean roof water and a small amount of treated parking lot runoff into the ground, and that gets us to the 17% impervious, which is a dramatic decrease from the 55.5 that is currently existing on the site.
So, what is the end result? They're saying that therefore the request of 17.2% impervious lot cover cannot be achieved. So you're saying...
It's not achieved by the formula in the aquifer protection zone. What we're asking for is relief, that you allow us to infiltrate some additional clean roof runoff into the ground to get that recharge.
Okay. So at some point, I had put together some numbers here. This is based on your petition. So we're going from, at one point, we're going from 21% to 19.7% to modify lot coverage. Is that accurate?
That was accurate, yes.
That was accurate. And so what are we actually going? We're going from impervious coverage of 55% to 17.2?
Yes.
All right.
You had already allowed us in a previous petition to go down to 19.5, so now we're getting it down a little bit lower to 17.2.
17.2, okay.
And with regard to the animal waste, when they got the original permit, they were required to have a good protocol so that the fecal matter is removed immediately upon its being deposited, double-bagged, placed in a steel container, and is hauled off-site by a licensed hauler, hauled outside of the aquifer district into a licensed disposal facility. So that's a protocol that they've kept going forward. And they're also volunteering to put a restriction on the land to not allow chem-lawn treatment for the lawns. A lot of people have fertilizers and pesticides placed on their lawn so that they have this magnificent green, putting green, and they're happy enough to have none of that, to only cut their lawn and do no fertilization, no pesticides application.
Gentlemen, you have any questions of Mr. Reom?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
With regard to the animal waste, I would, we typically have, and I'm going to add some language, that we'll leave that within the purview of the Board of Health. You're going to follow whatever regulations the Board of Health would require for something like that.
Yeah, there are a large number of dogs there now, and they basically scoop it up and remove it and sanitize the area. They have two outdoor areas right now where the dogs basically play outside. We're consolidating that into one area where they will properly dispose of the waste.
Doctor, any questions?
Not at this point, but basically, you can, you cannot control the amount of urine that they put, and it goes right down. The fecal material you can collect and dispose sometimes, as code on code, but the urine you have no control. The minute that they have something liquid, it goes down all the way. There's no possibility. How do you solve this problem?
Well, it's not a major problem. If I were to put a monitoring well quarter of a mile downstream, I wouldn't be able to detect any rise in nitrogen levels from this facility. There are thousands of acres that contributed to the aquifer, and lots and lots of people are using chem-lawn. Lots of people have pets, and none of that is handled properly. This facility is focusing on cleaning up the waste as it occurs.
Well, I think a lot of that falls within the purview of the Board of Health, and we'll leave it upon them. I think they're better suited than we are to address some of those concerns. It's not my area of expertise. I know it's something we can take into consideration, given that it's impacting the aquifer, but the operation of that location, I'm sure that because it does have animals, and they probably have a kennel license, and that probably comes from the Board of Health, too, so they're reviewing most of that. I'd like to think that they have a kennel license, and I'm sure that there are inspections that come along with that, doctor. And if they have any concerns, they're going to have to address them with that board. I'm more concerned at this point, if we're okay with the calculations. It appears to me that they verified that the calculations are accurate after looking at this edge-of-gravel area that you were referring to. And so therefore, you're asking for the relief in order to be able to put yourself at the 17.2%.
That's correct.
Okay. So I think what we have to be mindful of is, we've granted this once before. The only reason that they're here again is because they weren't able to get this project underway as a result of COVID and probably some demand issues with construction, whatever else. And I think they made an explanation the last time they were forced through counsel, and that's the reason they're here again. So they're not asking for anything, in essence, new. It's just they're here again because they were out by time. You have any comments, Mr. Attorney Faria?
No, I don't have any comments, Mr. Chair.
So at this point in time, I'm going to call upon anyone in the audience. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this petition? There appear to be no one. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak against and opposition to this proposal or this petition? There appear to be no one in the audience. So, gentlemen, if it's your pleasure, I'll move forward. I'm not going to close the public hearing on this in case we have to solicit some further information, either from counsel, who I see is here, and all, or the engineer, Mr. Reom. All right? So I'll move forward first with the variance case. So I put forth just some proposed findings, gentlemen. If there's any comments, you can interrupt me at any point in time. First, I find that the locus property of 562 Reed Road is identified as MAP 163 Lot 19 on the Dartmouth Assessors maps and is located in the General Business District in Aquifer Zone 3 overlay district. The subject property has an area of 43,708 square feet with an existing kennel, a dog daycare, and a residential dwelling with a deck and a pool. The subject property is served by Town Water and Sewer. Stephen and Laura Reposo have owned the property since May 2013. There is an existing commercial kennel business on the property, which has been operating since, and I put here, April 2013. That don't make sense, but do you know roughly when the client started to operate this business?
2013.
November 2013.
Thank you. So since November of 2013. I had some question mark there. Resolve that. I'd like to put how long you've been in business, so it shows that, to my knowledge, I haven't been in any complaints from any neighbors or anything about the operation, and it's been, at this point, coming on 10 years, right? Nine and a half years. "Have been operating since November 2013 by a special permit granted by the zoning board. The special permit has several conditions, all of which the Reposes have been in compliance with for over nine years. On November 7, 2017, the Zoning Board of Appeals granted the Reposes a variance to construct a metal three-stall garage on the premises to expand the existing dog kennel. The applicant is seeking a variance pursuant to Section 375-33.2b setbacks to construct a new 45-foot-by-80-foot dog daycare building to be placed 6.8 feet from the southerly property line and 6.8 feet from the westerly property line where 20 feet is required. The town of Dartmouth is the owner of the vacant property bordering the subject property to the north, south, and east. A zoning variance seeking similar relief was previously granted by the Board of Appeals on May 19, 2021. However, said variance has lapsed. The proposed one-story, 4,213-square-foot dog daycare building will replace an existing 1,600-square-foot dog daycare building on the property. The height of the new dog daycare structure will be in compliance with the height restrictions in the general business district. The requested variance meets the statutory requirements for granting a variance pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 10." The first prong of that statute requires us to find that there are circumstances related to soil shape and topography that especially affect the subject property that do not generally affect the zoning district in which the structural land is located. I propose the following, gentlemen. The location of the existing kennel building on site, the location of the existing dwelling, and the pool limit the placement of the proposed dog daycare structure to the southwest corner of the property as depicted on the submitted plans. The second prong, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. The placement of the proposed dog daycare structure and a location other than what is shown on the plans presents substantial hardship to the petitioner. And number three, desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. The proposed dog daycare structure will abut an existing one and will be set back from the front property line. The use is a suitable use in the general business district, which was previously approved by a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. And the fourth and last, the variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The proposed dog daycare structure will be positioned to the rear of the property, thereby lessening any view of the building from the public way. The variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. And as conditions, we typically put that the petitioner or any subsequent owner will secure all necessary permits and approvals from all applicable boards and agencies prior to the issuance of a building permit. All conditions associated with previous variances issued by this property shall remain in effect and adhered to by the applicants. And one additional requirement, condition I'm going to put is, the petitioner must comply with all requirements of the Board of Health relating to the storage and disposal of animal waste. All right, gentlemen, any questions or any comments?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Doctor?
I have none.
All right. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this case.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second motion.
All right. So, any other comments, gentlemen?
None, for me.
All right. So at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to approve or deny.
I'll make a motion to approve this variance.
Do you refer to the case, counsel?
Yes, Case ZAV-22-9.
With the stated findings and conditions?
Absolutely.
Can I get a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, the ayes have it, it passes. Let's move on to the second portion of their petition, which is the special permit, gentlemen. I will read it, and you'll have to bear with me because there's a lot of redundancy for some of this, but this is ZSP-22-13. The locus property is 562 Reed Road. It's also identified as MAP 163 Lot 19 on Dartmouth Assessors maps and is located in the General Business District in Aquifer Zone 3 overlay district. The subject property has an area of 43,708 square feet with an existing kennel, a dog daycare, and a residential dwelling with a pool and a deck. The subject property is served by Town Water and Sewer. Stephen and Laura Reposo have owned the property since May 2013, and there's an existing commercial kennel business on the property, which has been operated since November 2013, by special permit granted by the zoning board. The special permit has several conditions, all of which the Reposes have been in compliance with for over nine years. On February 7, 2017, the Zoning Board of Appeals granted the Reposes a variance to expand the metal three-stall garage on the premises to expand the existing dog kennel. The applicant petitioner is seeking a special permit pursuant to Article 28, Section 375-28.5b, lot coverage above 10% or lot coverage above 2,500 square feet of any lot, whichever is greater, to modify the existing lot coverage from 21% to 19.7. The applicant proposes to replace the existing one-story, 1,600-square-foot dog daycare building with a one-story 4,213-square-foot dog daycare building. The applicant is proposing to infiltrate the roof runoff to infiltrate as for groundwater recharge, thereby reducing impervious coverage from 55, excuse me, from 55% to 17.2%. Since the total amount still exceeds the parameters of Article 28, Section 375-28.5b8, a special permit is needed. The height of the new dog daycare structure would be in compliance with the height restrictions in the general business district, and the proposed use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. So we have the usual conditions, and in addition to that, we're adding the one where the petitioner must comply with all requirements of the Board of Health relating to the storage and disposal of the animal waste. Any questions, gentlemen?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
None, thank you.
I do have a question for Mr. Reom. I have an indication here that we're going from existing lot coverage of 21% to 19.7%.
That was the petition, but as we did more design work, we were able to get it down to 17.2.
17.2, so I should change that.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. So I've already asked whether or not there was anyone in opposition or in favor of this, gentlemen. We haven't heard anything. There's no one here. We're not supporting either position. At this point in time, given that we've got the feedback, and if you don't have any further questions of the petitioner, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing on this.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So the public hearing is closed on this, gentlemen. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we grant the special permit for Case ZSP-22-13.
With the stated findings and conditions?
Yes.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Reposo. Well, you hired the right people for the job. All right, moving on, gentlemen. So the next matter we have, gentlemen, is a matter that's been continued several times. It's Use Variance Case 20-20, excuse me, it's 2022-01. It was last continued from November 30, 2022. It's been reported to us that they're seeking a further continuance, and this came from Attorney Manning's office, and it indicates, Michelle, I know it's last minute, but my client is looking to continue tonight to the second meeting in April due to issues beyond control with Mr. Schubert's scheduling problems. Hopefully, this will all be okay. Let me know. And quite frankly, I think it actually worked out well because of the fact that Mr. Schubert had a matter that he needed to attend to this evening. So I don't have any issues with granting a continuance, gentlemen.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
But I don't know the exact date. I'd like to know the exact date so we could put it here.
Twenty minutes.
April 26.
I'd like to recuse myself from that because I'm a neighbor.
I'd like to refuse yourself because you're a neighbor. All right, well, that's right. So you recuse yourself throughout. So obviously, we don't have a quorum, but I, as the chairman, I think we can move forward with granting a continuance. We're going to put the matter on for April...
26.
26. So Wednesday, April 26 is the next date. All right. Now, gentlemen, that puts us to the administrative portion of tonight's meeting. The first matter that we have is a review and approval of administrative minutes of February 8, 2023. Any questions or comments, gentlemen, about that administrative minutes?
I don't have any.
All right. So at this point, oh, excuse me, doctor, you have any questions? All right. So I entertain a motion, gentlemen, to approve.
So moved.
Second motion.
All right. That's to approve the administrative minutes of February 8, 2023. A vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. The next matter we have is minutes for hearing case number ZAV-22-9 dated February 8, 2023. Any comments or questions, gentlemen?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
None, Mr. Chair.
I have none, neither. I need a motion, gentlemen.
So moved.
Second, make a motion.
Yeah, you made it.
So moved.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 8, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Next is minutes of February 8, 2023, Case ZSP-22-13 for 562 Reed Road. I have no comments, gentlemen.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
No comment, thank you.
If I can have a motion, gentlemen?
So moved, Mr. Chair, to approve the minutes.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. All right, gentlemen, that's pretty much for everything that's on the agenda. Is there any business that you feel we need to discuss here at open meeting? Now's the time. Any questions? Anyone want to raise anything, Mr. Hume?
No.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that we adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.